I'm gonna go see if there's people waiting upstairs cuz I don't know if there are but I said the lab so I'm down in the first floor. I don't think it's anybody here, but I will be right back. But you guys, uh, think about what you want me to talk to you about. Somehow it doesn't surprise me that you guys are the ones on here. Yeah, I mean, I just got here. So literally, and there's nobody here. So I'll leave it up to you if you do still wanna come here. Um, I mean, I'll wait here. It's not a big deal. Otherwise, I'll probably just, you know, take suggestions from you guys who showed up and whatever you guys wanna talk about. Cuz I have some stuff I was gonna go over like the innate immunity and the acquired immunity stuff like with a flow chart or whatever, but it's up to you those. Right now, you're it. Um, let me see. Let me just do some whiteboard. Okay, when we get this going, um, anybody who gets on here who wants to, you know, with mouse or you don't have to either, but you can participate on the actual whiteboard itself.
Can I? Sorry.
Alright. So I, um, first of all, before I get going, do any of you guys have a specific thing that you want me to cover?
I probably do. I have to look at my stuff. Sure I do. Why on? What is that noise? Where is it coming from?
From somebody's TV, probably, it sounds like. I didn't know if it was a TV or actual person at first. It's okay. I'm not judging. I was just confused. Right, so, okay, so this is what I'm gonna do. Uh, I do have the chat screen up, so if you guys, um, having questions or whatever, you can chat there or you can, of course, just talk over here. I mean, there's not very many of us on here. So feel free for discussions you'd like, but where I'm gonna start is basically kind of from the beginning with that innate immunity. So let's, let's start there. That's an end for sure. So with the innate immunity, we already know, like, the first line of defense stuff is probably nothing to you guys. It's, it's gonna be the skin and things like lysosome and keratin. So as far as those terms go, I mean, you could know those terms. It's not anything too crazy, but just so that we don't forget that we need to know them. I don't know why I'm thinking that this keyboard is gonna work when it didn't work last night. So there's some, um, part of like the first aspect cuz when we say there's three parts to immunity, and this is part number in addition to your skin and everything with that skin, etc. Okay, so number two, the second part of the news, the part we really care about, right, is our hair. And it has to deal with how your white blood cells are gonna be creating this sort of drama that's about to unfold for your body. So let me see if I can create that. I always draw it top down. Let's try to do this from the side to side. Let's start here. So when, it was beginning of all of that, all of the white blood cells, we know we call them leukocytes. Okay, and then those leukocytes, WBCs. Uh, we can stain them, obviously, so that's just gonna be the stain. And the ones that have granules and the ones that don't. So grand. Alright, so ones that have the granules, those are easy. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put neutrophils last so I can talk about them the most, but this is gonna be like your eosinophils, your vasophils, and your neutrophils. I don't know why that's a W. It is. Um, and also includes the mast cells, which we really didn't get into too much, but they are there. All of these are our granulocytes. It's just those four, and these top three are gonna be our fills. So we can remember. Right, if we're sticking with the innate immunity, I will come back later to, uh, the, the A granulocytes in a moment, but the whole big idea, the whole big purpose kind of of these cells and how they're gonna function is because they're going to, uh, you know, go around and eat up bad guys and stuff related to that. So the biggies for that one are gonna be neutrophils. It's also important to remember that these are going to be the, uh, ones that are the highest content in, um, the blood. Considering all the white blood cells, these ones make up like fifty-five percent of your white blood cell count. So it's pretty, pretty cool. So whatever, neutrophils, and what do they even do? Okay. So what do our neutrophils do? They're going to be involved in phagocytosis, of course, and other things that they're gonna be involved in because this is the inflammatory response that we're talking about here, and that's really what we have to go off of is they're gonna produce cytokines. And so those cytokines that we would be making, just going out there and seeing, um, you know, what's going on and seeing the bad guys reacting to them all the time, your cells are being triggered to respond accordingly, and whatever that might be. So a lot of these white blood cells accordingly means we're producing cytokines, and those cytokines, remember, that's going to be the stuff that, um, oh my gosh, they're just these are just our signaling molecules, also signaling proteins, because they are proteins. And, um, the things that they're gonna be able to do for us. They can, um, basically, uh, increase, call for increase in inflammation response. We can do, uh, obviously decrease, those have to go hand in hand. Then we have vasoconstriction or dilation, and then we have I'm having a brain fart right now, growth factors. These growth factors are going to be for our lymphocytes because we're trying to get that truck rolling as quickly as possible.
That's what the cytokines do? The, okay.
Yeah, these are the, the four things that they're
Okay, okay.
Let me actually put a note here just so everybody's clear what I'm talking about. Alright, so this is basically it for those, the cytokines. So when we're talking about the fact that neutrophils are gonna go out there and eat up the bad guys and break them down, that's whatever, that's easy enough to understand, but remember when they're going out there, they're also producing cytokines, so they're also regulating a very inflammatory response that called them to action, right? So they can do any of those cytokines and any of those effects of those cytokines. So they're not just eating things up. The other thing is, so that's the cytokine side. Alright, um, the phagocytosis side of things. So we know phagocytosis is going to be eating up whatever that bad guy stuff is gonna be, and also digesting, breaking it down. Eating and digesting, just like we would do with our own food. See, let me grab this. Okay, how to keep this part now, I'm like how would scoot this? Does it have to be? It's not, no, let me do it, whatever. Alright. Uh, so eating and digesting, and basically, um, when they're doing that, just to go over briefly, the whole, whole aspect of going and picking up the bad guy is driven entirely by recognizing some sort of aspect of the bad guy, right? So you can be sure it's a bad guy you're eating, not just whatever. So recognizing, and for them, it's gonna be the pamps. So remember that a pamp is gonna be a pathogen.
I can go in there.
Molecular This is going up under this. Oh, wow. Okay, that went away. I didn't realize that was gonna happen. Oh, uh, great. I don't know. I think I can open it up if it closes. I didn't realize I was gonna close the whole whiteboard. I apologize for that. You can see how often I really use this. Um, let me open that. When I use this on my laptop, it isn't laid out this way, so I'm gonna have to like figure out where my stuff is. How do I load my whiteboard? Oh, here it is. Here it is. Okay. Existing. I think this is it. Sorry. I thought that was just moving that. I know I can move this somehow. I thought this did it. Okay, so this is how we're gonna set things up. I'm gonna come back to the details on the pamps and the phagocytes here in a second. I need pa- I need space for it, so let's go ahead and go this way. Alright. We have our pamps. And I wanna keep these over here because they're gonna come up more than just this one time. So your pamp is, of course, gonna be your pathogen-associated molecular pattern, and you have to see these if you are an innate cell and you're responding to a thing. And so with the neutrophils, they're gonna respond to the pamps. Thank God that this is working now. So, um, so they're going to be responding to the pamps. They have to see it, but that at least is enough for them to say that, okay, bad guy is here, and we respond accordingly. I'm just to clarify that the pamps, remember, that's going to be, uh, things like potato glycan and, uh, LPS, which is endotoxin. And then double-stranded RNA, we find that in viruses, things like that. So we can immediately say anything with these things that can appear on a lot of different stuff, but we know that they're only associated with bad guys and not with good guys. So it's an easy way to identify. Alright. So we, we got our neutrophils, they come in the phagocytosis, they eat the thing up. They put it in their little phagosome, right? Um, the phagosome is just the sack that they're gonna be in once we eat them. That's it. That's all. A zone is just talking about a little vesicle. So you eat the thing, they're in the phagosome, we have another vesicle called a lysosome, another vesicle, and it has lysosome, it has oxygen reactive molecules, it has, uh, nitric oxide, and it has enzymes and stuff, but they're all designed to kill and digest whatever's in there, whatever's in that phagosome. So it could be anything, it could be just debris, it could be cellular debris from dead cells, but in this case, we're more, uh, interested in it being pathogens, right? So we will digest that stuff by creating the phagosome plus the lysome, the phagolysosome. And that's where that's happening. It takes about thirty minutes to digest it. And once we've digested it, if we're a neutrophil, we're just pooping it out, basically. So neutrophil digests it from, let's see, let's click on this. Up here. This, uh, phagocytosis part. And it is going to just all of the debris free plus the waste from digesting it. That's the product. And you might think like, okay, well, that's waste, and who cares, whatever. But the reason I'm even bringing it up is because they, number one, we've mentioned later in the next chapter, which we're already almost getting into talking about that here in just a second, right? Cuz this is really the basics of what's going on with innate. But if we're gonna, uh, wanna respond to things and we're, uh, having neutrophils be our first line of defense, and they're the ones out there eating things up and digesting, and they're just pooping all the stuff that helps us identify the bad guy out into the area. And then it'll leak into the lymph, of course, because this fluid comes out of the area, it just moves right into the lymph. But that's the important part. Which we'll come to in just a second. But they are not antigen-presenting cells, remember. Neutrophils, phagocytosis things, but they are not antigen-presenting cells. Alright. We go back to the next. So we're gonna stick with reminding you guys about the pamp and what that is and holding on to that. I'm gonna make a comment up here at the top, just reminding everybody about neutrophils. Neutrophils. Cool. We got that up there. Because, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, talking about this whole process and getting a big picture of it, that's what we need to know right now for the innate response. You still need to understand how the inflammatory response works. But, uh, as far as like how that, that part is gonna play a part in the next steps, we're gonna move on to the next chapter. Um, unless you guys have anything specific you want me to cover about chapter fifteen right now. I mean, obviously, there's more you need to know, and we can talk about it, but, uh, I'm just trying to paint the big picture of how this is gonna play out. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna move on. So we had our neutrophils poop out everything. We had our inflammatory response. You're digesting things and going out and killing all these bad guys. It's neutrophils, bad guy, uh, all the fluid that comes with it and all the waste that we're making from all that, and then the dead things that you're leaving around as well. So it's hanging out in the tissue wherever the inflammation is, if you had an injury, or if you have a localized infection, right? Um, otherwise, this happened like kinda all over. So leaving all this stuff behind us. Alright, during the inflammatory response, we mentioned that neutrophils and other cells, not just neutrophils, even, even the frickin' mast cells that we never talk about. When they're going in there and responding to those pamps, they're gonna produce in response cytokines, depending on what else they're finding in the area. So the cytokines that we mentioned in the last page and what they do. Um, so part of the cytokines will call in macrophages and, um, or dendritic cells, you know, from outside. So they get called in too. Now, we might say, why aren't the macrophages just there from the beginning? Well, there's not as many of them as there are of the neutrophils. Neutrophils are just hella all over, right? Uh, and they do a great job of killing, and they're doing that. So the macrophages are waiting for the signal to get called in. So they get called in. So let me put up here, this means macrophage, by the way. I'm just gonna put it in a little square up here so that you know if I abbreviate it. Okay. This is what's gonna happen. They're gonna get called into the area by those cytokines. They're gonna be floating around in the bloodstream. That's what they're gonna be doing anyway, or around in the tissue area and all that. So those signals are gonna call in the macrophages, number two. What are they gonna do when they come in? Do they just start acting? Is that all they needed was the call from the cytokines? No, because they still need to react to pamps. Okay, they still have to see that so that they're not just picking up. They can't actually have eyes, right? So they have to react to something that's telling them that this is bad guy stuff, so I can start killing and digesting and whatever. So they still need to have pamps present in order to start ingesting stuff themselves. So what are they gonna do once they get there? So let's put three, now they're active, they're ready to do their job. So now what are they gonna do? They're gonna do phagocytosis as well. That's no big surprise, just like the neutrophils, right? But they're also going to be there, um, eating up the neut- it's still phagocytosis, but, um, phagocytosis of the neutrophil waste. That's the important role that the neutrophils are playing for us. It's not direct, right? They're going in there, there just happens to be a ton of them in our bloodstream. So they go there, they start killing, and they start digesting, and that's all they have to worry about. When the macrophages get there, they'll pick up the debris and break it down also. But what do we know that the macrophages are gonna do next, right? They're going to take that debris from the area. They're gonna take the cells that they ate up and digested themselves. And, uh, let me just do like this. They're gonna break all that down. And then what they're gonna do with that is present that stuff that they found outside of the cell on MHC two, right? So that's what's gonna happen to it. So we've gone through that entire process just like that. We got, we went from our innate response of a bad guy getting in, um, cells in the area sending signals, the neutrophils coming in, eating things up, breaking it down, the macrophages finally get called in. Now they are going to be eating things up too, and also picking up the waste from the neutrophils and putting it on MHC two. So that's how that crap from the neutrophils gets presented. They're not APCs, this is important to remember, but the APCs will come along and do the work that they couldn't do in that respect. Okay, so that's the important aspect of our macrophages. And man, if you wanted to call any cell at all in your entire immune system a workout, a workhorse, it's gonna be a macrophage, right? Because they are the, the bridge between both sides. So they have picked up now all of this, uh, junk from the outside and starting to go around and presenting it from MHC. They picked it out from outside, so it has to be MHC two. Okay, so this is the story that we're telling. So if they're picking it up and presenting it on MHC two, what do I mean by that? Where is that happening? How is that going down and why? Okay, so this part in the middle, it's not too bad. Um, remember that you had fluid, right? You had fluid, um, in that area, fluid, associated just with the inflammation, right? That's what brings the cells in. They come in with the fluid. That's part of how they move around, right? So moving from tissues, moving into the bloodstream, and then out of the blood vessels into the tissues via diapodysis, right? That's the way that they move through the cells. They squeeze through, that's the term for it. And they get into the tissue, and they're doing their fighting, whatever. And once they're in that tissue, breaking things down. And if you're a neutrophil, that's all you'll be doing is breaking it down and killing. Um, but if you are a macrophage, when you get there, you're gonna pick up the crap the neutrophil left behind, and you're gonna help with the killing. So we're, now we're there. So we have all that fluid in there though, right? That's why we have fluid. And it isn't gonna stay there. Otherwise, your skin would just build up fluid and not ever like, oh, it's so, it's not gonna stay there, right? So it has to get out. And even when we talk about reabsorbing fluid back into the body, where do you think it goes, y'all? It goes into the lymph, right? So all that fluid in whatever tissue was inflamed or whatever, local area was inflamed is going to be also cycling back into the lymph. It doesn't go back into the bloodstream because that's how all this was designed. You can't take pathogens from this area that we had all this inflammation in and just shove them back into the bloodstream. So that is part of a safety net there. The fluid that you're pulling out of an inflammation area could be contaminated, so we put them through the lymphatic system. And we know that moves from those extremities back towards the heart, right? Um, so this is, this fluid will go into the lymph. Um, and then it will go to the heart. So we are filtering everything before it makes it back into the bloodstream and rejoins everybody so that we're not risking infection with everything. That's how that will be working. Alright, so why am I reading that up? When we come back over here to our macrophages on the left, over here, um, those macrophages that are presenting crap on the MHC two, what they did was take that, that stuff they digested, put it on the MHC two molecule, but they're moving around here now. They've moved out with that load they're carrying on their MHC, and they're ready to be scanned. They're going to that location, um, they'll get filtered out at lymph nodes. Think of them just as checkpoints. And if you have anything on you, um, at those checkpoints, that could be interesting. You'll be kept, kept there uh, by the cells that are checking you out. And you'll interact with all the cells there, and it's like I was saying in class. Um, I think all of you guys are also in my in-person classes. So it's like I was saying in class, um, it's like they're going around being like, does anybody recognize this? Cuz they're moving back to the heart with their stuff in their MHC, asking does anyone recognize that? Okay, cool. So we've got that. That's simple enough. And, um, there will be a one T cell maybe, and it'll only be one, because remember And it'll only be one because remember our cell repertoire, whenever we were making all of our clones of everything, we have one for each antigen you could possibly make ever. So only one. So we're finding that one guy that is the specialist about this antigen, right? Okay, so another thing about MHC that I want to remind you guys about. With MHC, it's just general one kind of molecule that's going to be on the surface of your cell. If you're an antigen presenting cell, right? Any kind of MHC, whether it's one or two, this applies to. But we're talking about two right now, so MHC two. If you are an antigen presenting cell, there's not different MHC twos that you have, it's just MHC two. So this is a very general association with whatever you're presenting. It's very general. So what I'm saying is they can, if this is their MHC two and like if it was in my hands, I don't know if you guys can see me on here, but if you had MHC as your hands and that's just how they always are, MHC two is always like this, right? Whenever they pick up some crap, it could be the pen, it could be the fidget spinner, it could be whatever. They pick up that thing, it's always held in that same old MHC two. There's nothing special about it. The reason I'm bringing that up is because we already know that the cells that it's going to interact with and show that pen or whatever to, they're looking for a specific antigen, right? They're the lymphocytes. They have a receptor on their surface that only recognizes this pen, only recognizes that fidget spinner. So MHC, it'll it'll present anything on it. It doesn't know. Okay, so anyways. So our MHC general presentation and it's going to present it to a very antigen specific receptor on just one cell that's going to get activated. So that's the idea, this is the setup. And when that happens, when that cell, it comes and interacts with it, it says, oh, yes, I recognize that pen. Well, I recognize the fidget spinner. I'm going to get the fidget spinner because I feel like it's a better example. But if we have the fidget spinner, right? And this is the whole fidget spinner. You could call this your antigen. Okay, fidget spinner, easy, whatever, we've been talking about that. This is your antigen. When your receptor comes along and it wants to interact with its antigen, it interacts with like part of it. It'll come and not grab the whole fidget spinner, right? It comes in and grabs part of it and interacts with that part that it's been seeing, right? That's called the epitope. All right, so I'm going to make a new page because this is getting busy. So we had MHC two general presentation of that antigen. And then our lymphocyte, I'm just going to put lympho for now. I'm not going to get specific. It has a specific receptor that recognizes. Yeah, recognize whatever, that's really good handwriting, recognizes parts of the part it interacts with, the part of that antigen. And that part of the antigen, we call the epitope. And that's pretty much the only time I'm going to bring up the epitope. Because you guys have to know what it is. And people usually have a hard time knowing the difference between epitope and antigen. So I want to be sure that this is where I'm explaining it. And I hope that it makes some kind of sense to you guys. All right, so that's the epitope versus antigen problem. Right, so we've come up to that lymphocyte. Let's say it is a T cell. In fact, let's be even more specific, right? They come up and they see a CD four T cell. It is naive at this point. So the CD four T cell will interact with your macrophage that is presenting on your human line straight, MHC two with whatever your antigen is, right? That T cell only reacts to that antigen and it is the only one that will be, you know, reacting to that antigen. So here's our magical T cell. It's a CD four. I want to remind you guys about this. It's CD four T cell, but it is a not a helper cell yet. It is just CD four. It has CD four as a marker on its surface. That CD four does nothing. It's just an identifier. It's like a badge, like a color of badge to help you identify, you know, different workers in your factory or something. This person is on the floor, this person is, you know, management and whatever. So that's all this is, that's CD four. It's a marker. All right, so we see a T cell, matches the antigen, recognizes it. And we're going to start talking. How do they start talking? How do they send the signals that everything's good with this? Because remember, macrophage isn't having any clue what kind of antigen it has. The T cell is saying it sees it. How do we verify this interaction? Cytokines. So if everything's good, we will talk to each other with the same old signaling molecules we've been using the whole time. Cytokines. So the cytokines verify this whole thing. Again, I'll put cyto, okay, because I want to write it out. Cytokines are going to vary this whole B, what's involved in this whole reaction, having everything happen, what how, what is supposed to happen? Okay. So we're activating our T cell. That's what's happening here. We have the right thing we're presenting. We sent the right cytokine signal. Now our CD four T cell, it's active, okay? So we'll just draw it's happy, let's make it happy here. And it is active. All right, so what happens next? What happens next is that this CD four T cell, this one lymphocyte, this only one, it's going to go through proliferation and differentiation. So yeah, I'm going to go that way. So we're going to proliferate and differentiate. Proliferate means we're going to make just a bunch of clones of that cell. That that initial nondescript CD four cell. Differentiate means, once that we have all of those clones, we are going to give them jobs. Okay, so what are the the jobs that we can have? I don't need you to know too many of them, but I need you to know four for the CD fours, right? You can be the memory the regulator. And this is going to sound like three because I'm going to say it like it's three, or you can be a T helper. Okay, so this is going to become two things, but it just demand, it just matters like how we interact with things. But if you guys don't remember, it's going to become either T helper type one or T helper type two. Now, this layout that we're getting of the memory, the regulator and the other one that's doing the work, right? That layout happens with all of our lymphocytes, all of them. So anytime they are activated, they do the same crap, right? They're going to go through, they're going to go through, yes, proliferation. And then those are going to go through getting their jobs assigned. And it's always going to be memory and it's always going to be regulator, no matter what. And then the other one, that third, in this case, we can divide it into two more. But the general third one is the effector cell, always. This is our effector. And this is the one that is doing the big job, right? Actually doing a job of memory, what is it doing? Waiting regulator, what is it doing? Making everybody calm, that's really it, right? So what is really doing the work? Why are we doing this? Why are we having this reaction? Why are we even putting up with waiting so long for this to happen before we can protect our body? Because of this effector aspect of these cells. So this is the one doing the real job. When I ask people, you know, we know about antibody side of your immunity and the cell mediated side of your immunity. We think of antibody, that's the effector job of the B cells. The cell mediated immunity, the way we, reason we say it's so general is because we do have cytotoxic T cells that do like the big guy work, right? They do the killing and the dirty work. But the T helper cells are arguably even more important because we need them to tell everybody what to do. Like we were saying in the evening class, for those of you who are in my evening class, it's like the T helper cells are the captain directing everybody else on what they can do, giving them the okay to go to war. But you can't do it without the T helper cell telling you. So we're going to go through that. All right, so we've got our T helper cell and yeah, okay, cool. New page, because I write so big. I was, I was hoping you could do this all one page. I don't know what I was thinking, you guys. Okay, so we have our T helper cell. And that T helper cell, it's going to go start turning guys, activating people, right? We have gotten this signal basically from outside of the cell, right? So part of what happens when you see that TH, when the TH cell, the T helper cell sees that MHC two molecule on whatever presenter it's seeing it from, that's going to lean that response to that TH two. The issue is that just like what we see in pretty much any infection, typically you're going to have both responses. But that fact that it came to us on MHC two leans it this way. Okay, so that's easy enough for you guys to remember because all you really need to know is that if we found it on the MHC two from an antigen presenting cell that picked it up from outside, then we're going to have TH two being our preferred helper, okay? So let's, let's talk about TH two. So our TH two helper cell. And he is going to go around and activate other cells, sure. But what is he really, what are we interested in? We want to make antibody, right? We want antibody because that's what's going to go fight that bad guy that we were eating up out there. So what he's going to do is that TH two cell that is active already got his job and now he's going out to do it, is going to find a B cell. Now, does he just find a B cell? And his receptors on his surface, let's say that this is what his receptor looks like here. And then our our B cell receptor looks like, I don't know that, all right? But they both interact with fidget spinner. Okay, the same part of the fidget spinner too, same epitope. Do they just like lock up receptors or something or what is going on? No, what happens is separate from all of this. It's not going out and looking for the B cell that's just lying in wait, waiting, reading this book, waiting to be activated. It's not doing that. The B cell already comes with the fidget spinner. This is a fidget spinner for sure, guys, it's not a dick, I swear. Okay, so so it comes around because we're filtering all of that fluid out. Remember how we brought in the macrophage that was picking up the neutrophils junk with the fluid that moved in from that area? That fluid also brings just junk with it. And it gets filtered through our lymph node where the B cell picks it up. Now, it doesn't just pick it up. It's an antigen presenting cell. And that's why, because it's already hanging out in the lymph and it is waiting, but it's waiting for the antigen because that's going to come first. And it's going to hold on to that antigen. It can't run out and do its job because why? Because it's part of the same old army as everybody else. It has to wait for the okay. So all of this stuff typically is happening simultaneously. And so we had our TH two cell get activated by that macrophage. Meanwhile, the crap that that macrophage brought in with it, the B cell picked some of it up. And now it's waiting patiently for the captain. And this is its captain. So this captain has been activated and it's coming up to this B cell. And they both see that fidget spinner and interact with the fidget spinner and they send messages, you know, cytokines again to one another. And then that will make that B cell active. Okay, so I don't need this to say lymph node really right now. Oh, wow, okay, I just, I guess I erased everything. Anyways, here's your B cell. It's been activated. What was right active?
So so mess, so cytokines are messages between the TH two and the B cell and that's what activates the B cell?
Yep, so always if you hear about cells activating one another, if you're hearing about them sending messages to either other cells in the immune system or other cells in their area, always it's some kind of cytokine. A cytokine is just a word for messenger molecule. Makes sense?
Yes.
Oh, all right, there's a lot of them. So that's why I'm not talking about them individually. So we don't need to worry about that luckily. So we're not, so we have our active B cell. And you guys know what's about to happen, right? Our B cell is active. It's been active. I'm going to make space, that's why I'm drawing it this way again. All right, so B cell is active and he is going to, what is he going to do? Proliferate, don't forget that step. Proliferate and differentiate. We can't just run off and do the job. Because we are the only one that sees fidget spinners. So we have to make copies of ourself first. All right, so we proliferate, we make copies of ourself, just general B cell. And then we differentiate into our different jobs, which again, memory, regulator and effector. In this case, our effector cell is our antibody producing cell. And for those of you who don't remember, that we call the plasma cell. Right? So we have our activated cells. They've been memory, they've been regulator so they can keep us from going out of control, prevent autoimmunity and everything like that. And then we have the big, the big guns for this one, the bomber, right? That's what we were saying, the plasma cell. So we can drop bombs on this war. So let's, I want to go on to the page, I want to keep going on this page. So here's our plasma cell. I want to be sure I write cell because it's not plasma. I had people asking about, you know, you know, plasma, if it was proteins and all this. So it gets confusing because of plasma. I didn't choose the name unfortunately. But yes, it is just, it's a cell that we call the plasma cell, all right? And that cell, now that we have everything active and ready to go, is just going to start cranking out antibody, right? That's what it does. That's its whole purpose. And it already has the ability to make antibody to fidget spinner and only fidget spinner. But we have a whole bunch of them making antibody for fidget spinner because that's what we're attacking. So that antibody to that fidget spinner, we're going to be unloading into the bloodstream. At this point, because it takes work to get a more specific interaction with the antigen. And I'll tell you guys this, you don't need to know this for the exam, but I feel like it helps to understand what's going on. So what happens is you have a B cell that saw fidget spinner, right? And it was like, okay, yeah, fidget spinner. But it's going to keep interacting with fidget spinner and figure out the best way for its antibody to interact with fidget spinner. It's going to fine tune it. So you know, when I say that we make IgM first, right? And I say that IgM is not a very efficient or effective antibody, but it's what we get first. That's why, because IgM is our, the first one that saw fidget spinner. And now we're going to work on making a, an antibody from the same original one that's just better at seeing fidget spinner. That takes time. That's genetic stuff that has to go on, like genetic reassortment and all that. But anyways, my point is we send out what we have right away. And that is our original plasma cell that can have IgM. And that's our pentamere, it looks like the snowflake, right? All right, and our antibodies, you all know this already, being shaped like that. Alright, and our antibodies, you all know this already, being shaped like that. When I say that it is a snowflake shape, they're all like attached basically at this point, yeah? All around in a circle and because this part out here. That part out there is what interacts with the antigen. Why this one is right? Push harder, I don't know. Um, so that part's gonna interact with the antigen. That's because also this whole part here, which structurally we call the FAB. This part is where we have that variable. Region. And it's pretty cool genetically speaking, you have a whole bunch of different um parts that have to go into. That variable region, you have to have at least one of one thing, one of another thing and one and another and whatever. But you have this whole set of stuff you can choose from in the genes. So you mix and match it however you like, and that's where you get a lot of your variation. But then you also can um add or remove nucleotides because it's just really like general spicing together. And that's where you get the most of your variation and that's where all your variety comes from in your antibodies. So super like, it sounds so totally random, but it works, so. So that, um, but yeah, so that variable region, that's where those genes are that are gonna be getting switched up. And be able to recombine and give you all that variety in the antibody interaction. So that my, the, the cell that I'm talking about, our B cell that just got activated, it can see fidget spinner. But the other one sees pen because of those gene interactions making those cells different. Alright, so. Alright, then this part down here, I'm sure you guys remember, that part is called FC structurally. Um, and you know, at least functionally somewhat, this is the constant. Region. Now, that constant region down there, that is basically what tells the antibody what to do. And where to do it and how. So there's not a lot of variety there because all you need is that classes directions in that constant region. What I mean by that is IgM has a constant region that tells it to do IgM stuff. IgG has constant region that tells it to do IgG stuff. Right now have their own thing that tells them what to do and where to do it, but not a lot of variety within IgM or IgG. The real variety is at the top where we interact with that antigen, where we need the variety be. Um, cool, okay, so I'm gonna get a new page now. Alright, the next page, can you guys flip between the pages? I'm wondering. Oh, that's really cool, okay, good. I've never seen it from the other side, so I don't know, alright, um. So we have our uh active B, our plasma, right, plasma cell. And it is cranking out IgM. It's a fidget spinner. And everything's going well, so what is IgM or any antibody really doing? What is the whole point of even making that antibody? Well, basically the whole point of making that antibody is that it's gonna stick to things and that really is weirdly the point. Of an antibody, right? So um, so that's going to stick onto all sorts of stuff. Now IgM is not very good at some of the stuff that antibodies can do. We, and I'll go over all six of the things that they can do, but of all those six things. It's got a problem because it's got its FC, its constant region, basically like stuck at the bottom. So stuff that you need to interact with that, it's just not very good and like optimization. So anyways, we're sticking our antibody to stuff and here's what it can do. Uh, number one, we can coat. The word just, it is exactly what it sounds like, don't read too much into it, literally just covering a thing all over with the crap. And so it can't do anymore, right? So we're gonna coat it. Number two. We can, I'm trying to think of what it looked like on the slide, uh optimization. You guys don't remember. What optimization is, lucky because I'm here, alright, so optimization. There is a reason why this word is this word, but it has to do with ops, but don't, you don't need to know it. So basically it is just exactly this, it helps. Phagocytosis. So it sticks on there and gives the, the phago, the phagocyte something to grab, like a handle. Um, that's easy enough, except when you are IgM and you're friggin' like snowflake shaped and the cell can't grab your FC region. Because what the cell is grabbing is your constant region, right? You can imagine if you had uh bacteria here and we had antibodies stuck all over, I'm sure I put Y's so that I don't have to draw it all. But then you have our phagocyte that's coming along and it wants to eat that, having a hard time because it's got a capsule, right? Won't even draw that that way, right? So our antibodies that are on the outside, it's gonna grab on to these, but if you friggin' stick an antibody on here. That looks like IgM, so you have like uh this and then that's on to that and then that's on to that. And it, sorry for how ugly this is, but you get the idea. Um, how does the cell interact with that area? Right? How does it grab the handle? So that makes it, it's not that it can't do it, it's just not good for it, that's not, it's, you know, big job. And so that's uh another reason why we want to switch to another class of antibody. And get specialized as quick as we can, but it takes time to specialize finding the best one. That combined to the fidget spinner compared to what we have now, right? So that takes time, so we're working on that. In the meantime, this is what we've got. Eventually, we will switch our class to IgG and not only will it be IgG, but it will be IgG that binds better to the fidget spinner. So it's like super like the better antibody, there's no doubt about it. So um that will be fine at optimization, it'll do just like we drew at the top and it won't have a problem. So that'll be a better job for IgG. Um, anyways, some of them have better jobs for, for some stuff. So that's optimization, we're just being like a handle that the phagocyte can grab on to. Uh, number three, we had neutralization, right? What are we neutralizing? Viruses, typically viruses. Or whatever your pathogen is that if it's entering your cell. Whatever molecule it uses to get in there, so we know viruses, this is going to be your viral spike. That's the key, so the virus is going to be using to get into your cell. And a virus uh typically has a spike made of glycoprotein. Which is ideal kind of molecule to make an antibody too, so it's a good target. He also, if we can block that and stick our, if we had our virus here and we have all of our little spikes coming out and whatever. And our antibody literally is going to recognize that spike. Right? And we can block all of those that way, I'm not gonna draw that on all of them, but you get the idea. Block all of them that way, it can't get into a cell now. And if you are a bacteria that gets into cells, we already know there's bacteria that do that, right? Like tuberculosis, um, it hides out in your alveolar macrophages. And now that I say that now, I bet that that sounds even crazier than it did in the beginning of the semester. But yeah, it hides out in the alveolar macrophages, it wants to get eaten up and so it can hang out there. Um, but your antibody will try to block that, any receptor that it uses to do that, so it's not just viruses. Okay, um, but that's what we're thinking of there, keeping the bad guy from entering by blocking its entry mechanism. Lock entry. Okay, number four. That was agglutination. Most of us kind of know what agglutination is, we use the concept of agglutination a lot with red blood cells, especially for touching. Testing like blood types and stuff like that, um, if you see the clump form and sink to the bottom, then that's a glute nation. A glutinate just means to stick together. So that's all agglutination is, no big deal. The way that it works with antibody is, I mean, the, the picture on the slides probably better than what I'm about to draw here, but. The way it works with antibody, you've got your uh bacteria all over the place and whatever, and your antibody, it recognizes with its little Y. Side, one half of the Y, right there, but it also recognizes the other one has the same part on it. So it recognizes there and then this guy, same business, and then this guy, same business. Now it's starting to look actually kind of cool, but anyways, my point is that they will cause them to stick together. And if they're stuck together, they can't do their bad guy stuff, just like if we coat them all over and number one. They couldn't do their bad, bad guy stuff if they were coated, it's the same thing. Alright, um, the next one was complement. And immunology would abbreviate it like this. A compliment in the compliment cascade, which I did not bring up earlier in that first slide, right? And that's fine because I knew I was gonna come to it down here. So compliment is made up of, we already know it's about fifty and you don't even know the number, but it is about fifty proteins that are in the bloodstream all the time. Um, they basically, they're always there, they don't have to be uh induced to be made. Is what my point is, so they're always there, constitutive, okay? And that's, that's good, that's something that for once in our friggin' immune system, we don't have to make, make something. Come around first, so it's always there. And it is just proteins that if, if it sees, let's say antibody, because that's the one way that we're gonna talk about. But if it sees antibody, that causes, that's a protein and a protein interaction. When the proteins bind with one another, it causes the shapes to change potentially. And as a result of that shape changing that we're going to be going through. Um, we will cause a whole cascade of shape changing of proteins to other proteins later on. Down the line, fifty proteins we're talking about that we can affect with that one antibody binding onto the first one. So cool enough, I guess. Um, but that's why we call it the compliment cascade, because there's gonna be a whole bunch of reactions that happen just from that first one. So what happens with this? Well, um, first of all, if you are in compliment cascade and activating the compliment pathway. And you are an antibody that's doing that, you are using the classical. Which was called pathway. The word antibodies activating it, so there's that, there's three things that. Um, let's see, compliment can do, I'm more concerned about what they can do rather than the steps involved, I'm not gonna lie. So compliment can uh help with the inflammation process. The proteins that it makes during the cascade can get involved with those cytokine signaling and everything, so that's how it helps with that. So uh it will also, once you activate it, um, get involved with. Optinization. Now, in the earlier slides when we talked through chapter fifteen itself, we didn't call it that, we just said phagocytosis. But it meant this, it meant optimization, they just didn't want to talk about it that way yet. So it's optimization, the compliment can work the same way as how the antibody did and serve like as a handle. For it to grab on to. And that's the actual compliment proteins doing that. Uh, number three, what the compliment can do uh is that membrane attack complex. Now the membrane attack complex. It's just a whole bunch of compliment proteins that are going to come together. I don't have enough space to write it with my hands, so I have to type this. Um, okay, there's a whole bunch of proteins that are going to be coming together and um. Creating a circle, a circle or hole in the target cell, so we are sticking them all together. Building like a little, a wall, kind of like a well, if you can think of it, but on the inside it's just a hole. So that cell is now leaking its contents, that'll be what it does at first. But once we have everything kicked into gear and acting, we can get other toxic substances into the cells. So then compliment is just helping out the whole process. But first it can poke holes and believe me, that is effective in and of itself, so it's a pretty good goal to strive for. Alright. And. I think I'm happy with that part of it, just trying to think, I know it's like scrolled. All I had to do was scroll it, guys, I didn't even realize it, okay, um. So the last thing, right, there's one more thing with this. I was like, what else, what is it doing? I was talking about compliment and I lost my train of thought, six. What antibody can do, right? What am I to, the, the sixth thing is anti-toxin. We've already covered whole entire cells and prevented them from doing their work just by covering them. We've already covered uh specific parts of viruses so they can't enter their targets. So it's no surprise that we can also use antibody to bind to a toxin, which is a protein, it's just a small protein. We can bind to that and now the protein can't do its job, so that's what that is going to do. Uh, so protein plus, plus protein, now it can't do what it's trying to do. And that's how your, uh, you know, vaccine does with. Um, tetanus and pertussis and diphtheria. That's antibody and that's all of its functions, B cells making antibody, I'm really sure I'm covering what I wanna cover here. Before we move on. Somebody feel like I'm missing something, I know I have the T cells to come to, but I haven't gotten to that rest of their story yet. But for the B cells, this is basically it, like they're gonna crank out the antibody, we said that they're going to have IgM. Cool, and that it's terrible, pretty much, it's not the worst, but we're trying to get something that binds better. And it's more um flexible in what it can do. And so that's kind of what we're waiting for in the meantime, and once we have that ready, once we have that antibody, that's actually if more effective. For binding, uh, the first, then we'll, we'll switch our class. Because now we can, we wanna use the more flexible one instead of the weird like broad grabbing, doing as much as we can, um, but that's all we can do because. We aren't very specific, now we've got this specific guy um who can do all the broad stuff too, but also the more specific stuff. So that guy, we know that's gonna be your first class switch, it's gonna be IgG. And it's really the star of the antibody show. So again, that's all determined by that uh constant region, the bottom, the bottom of the Y as to what it can do and everything. Uh, but it just so happens that once we switch to IgG, we've also perfected our antibody. So it's really good, so IgG, this can do pretty much whatever, wherever, it's gonna be our, our largest, biggest main workhorse. Okay, uh, the other guys that you can switch to, you can be IgA. This is gonna be the stuff in the mucosa. So and then mucosa, we're talking about the respiratory tract and we're talking about um in the colon and, and uh the GI areas. And we're talking about um the genital areas and all of that, so. Yeah, IgA and it's useful and it's, you're gonna see it a lot when we talk about the diseases. Um, so IgA, IgD. I don't know why I wrote it down, down like that, but whatever, IgD is just our receptor. On the B cell. And when I say it's just the receptor on the B cell. When we talk about this receptor up here, that's what I mean, that's IgD. But it gets its own little designation. So I'll even write that here so that we know, we go back to. Um, and then the last one is IgE. And this is usually associated with allergies in our bodies. Yeah, I am allergic to cats, for example, so I have IgE somewhere where that I perhaps hanging around. And we'll talk how it works in the next chapter, in chapter seventeen, um, but it's kind of neat. Uh, but yeah, it's antibody against something that you wouldn't think that your body should be making antibody to. But yeah, that's how it goes, it is foreign, I can't argue with that. So those are the different kinds of antibodies you can have and um antibody can float around in your body for a while after an infection. And so the, and so can the memory cells that make the antibody. This is your biggest defense against something if you're going to be seeing it again later. So most of the time when we make a vaccine against something, we're trying to trigger the antibody response. Because if you can get IgG, y'all, you don't even need it, anything else, that's that, okay? Uh, we good with the B cell side, we'll move on to T cells, I think. We already mentioned that we had, just to reprise. We already mentioned that we had, just to reprise, be sure we're paying attention, bad guy out in like the periphery, right? He has on him a pant. And a neutrophil came and ate him up because he recognized the pant. The neutrophil hooped out its waste. And that's not useful on our side of things. That waste though was picked up by a macrophage. And also that waste can go out to the bloodstream and interact with a B cell. That macrophage brought it to a T cell, a CD4 T cell, a T helper cell. And that made a T helper two, because we saw it on MHC two, because we picked stuff up from outside the cell. Anyways, that T helper will activate that B cell. We had the B cell. It became a plasma cell. And then that plasma cell made an antibody. Just to reprise what we've seen so far. Alright. Um, okay. So let's say that that's what, that's what we saw at that location. You can imagine that there would be a situation where you could be infected with like a virus, flu or whatever. It doesn't matter. But we know viruses. We know that they have to get inside of your cell to live because they're obligate, whatever obligate intracellular parasites. Anyways, we know that about a virus. So we know that they want to live inside of a cell, which means that if you're just a nice happy little, I don't even know what kind of cell. I don't know, liver cell, let's just say, doesn't matter. So here is your liver cell. This virus comes along and uses this little spike on the outside of your receptor here and then match up and it gets inside, right? So now we've got viruses on the inside of you, right? That's easy enough to imagine. However, your liver cell, it knows what's up, y'all. So it doesn't just take it lying down. What it will do is match it up with this other little molecule. Parts of it, just pick them up, just pick up parts that are already building inside. Because we know viruses are going to be laying their shit everywhere they go. So it's just going to pick up some of those parts to combine it with this molecule and put it on the surface of itself. This. Let's say this is viral, virus part, okay? That receptor right there, we know is MHC one. Whereas MHC two was only on our antigen presenting cells. And H C one can be on all nucleated cells. Okay, so that's because any cell can get a virus. I'm writing it too, just so people don't forget. Okay, so we have our virus. We have parts that we've picked up while it's multiplying. And we're going to put part of it up on our MHC one. You can imagine there could be stuff like this happening that wasn't super like concerning, maybe not a virus part. Maybe it's something you just thought was dangerous happening inside of a cell and it wasn't. And it would just pop it out on MHC one, right? And remember, just like MHC two, MHC one is just a general way of getting the thing out there, the specific thing. So if this is the viral particle, fidget spinner viral particle, if that's the viral particle, MHC one can present that, but it can present the pen, it can present, you know, you get it. It's the same as what we had before. So that MHC is just the same as the other MHC. It's just, this is a class one instead of the previous class two. So it's general presentation. It doesn't know what it's holding out. It just knows that it shouldn't be there. So it's holding that out and saying, please help me, please help me. Okay, so we're asking for help and all that by doing that. If you were to grab just some random crap inside your own cell that you, whatever reason, I don't know why, thought was dangerous, but isn't. The next part is the part where you like would be controlled. So there's, there's a checkpoint here, right? So you have your liver, so I'm going to draw it so it's not as dirty looking, liver cell. And we're going to have our MHC. Let's just draw it down here because I'll have space. And our virus particle sticking out of it. Alright, that's great. That's one thing. This is happening inside the body somewhere. That's it for that story for now. Okay? Also, that's happening. Also, you're, just have cells out in the wild, I don't know, that can also get sick with that cell or maybe even God, you know, it could even be out there doing its job. And it got sick because it was trying to take care of things for another cell. Or that cell died and it's picking up its debris. However, it happens. You have cells in the area and it's usually going to be an antigen presenting cell at this point. But they're going to have to deal with the virus too, because that liver cell can't go ask for help. It can't go out and activate. Right? It can't go out and activate the cells. So there's a couple of things that can happen. What I will say is that if you have a CD8 T cell that is naive, it hasn't seen anything, hasn't been activated or anything. And it has, I don't know, ability to react to this. It's receptor. Sees this business, right? See, the T cells generally are floating around in circulation. And what they will do is see that, but they can't take that to the site to go get activated by the other T cells. So what they do is they know they need to get activated. They've seen this antigen. So they will go to the lymph node and wait for the cell that it needs to, to come activated. So because it knows already that it needs to play its part, whatever. This liver cell is stuck in place. We know that. It's not going anywhere. So what happens is we have cells that can go places that will have the virus or can pick it up somehow. Because you know, virus is going to be friggin everywhere, y'all. Right? If it picks it up from outside and it wasn't affected by it, MHC two, that's just the rules, y'all. This is an inside type of a pathogen, but if we pick it up from outside, MHC two. However, if you had it inside of you as an infection or you had a signal associated with it, that you picked it up in that area from someone else that had it inside or you're just a cell that's infected, it can move around. These things, you can now go to the appropriate location like a lymph node or wherever your T helper cell is. Where is the T helper for that virus? Once that T helper that is naive, is not a T helper anything yet. It's just a CD4. Actually, this is like, I'm drawing too much. I was back. Thought it would do this faster and it is not. Okay, once you have your CD4 cell that is going to be involved in interacting with the virally affected cells, right? Getting involved in that situation anyways. That CD4, it sees virus stuff, right? It has the same friggin' thing going on. It sees the same thing. And what happens is it will be interacting with this whole situation, just like we did with earlier with the antibody pathway, right? It's going to see MHC one, right, on that cell. So that's going to get presented on MHC one. We already said that. It's just like on that liver cell. And H C one, because it came from inside of the cell. And this guy recognizes it with what? Do you guys remember what it recognizes it with? It's okay that you don't have to answer. What it recognizes is with the T cell receptor, right? So this T cell receptor happens to meet up with that. That is specific, right? So MHC, just some crap that it uses to hold stuff out. It doesn't know what it's holding out. And MHC one got this from inside the cell. We're holding out on our, we don't know what receptor. It's just going to say we need help, interact with us. The CD4 that is naive. It's just CD4. It's just going to react to that with its T cell. It does see this. It says fidget spinner. Yeah, I see that. That's the one that we need. So it gets activated. So yeah, we're going through this again. So now this is active. And it's going to do the same thing, proliferate and differentiate, same way that the other CD4 did. But now we are favoring because we saw MHC one, the TH one response, right? Because MHC one leads to this. There's messages sent involved in that that helped it decide to do that. So once it's got its little active area and this guy wants to interact with this guy out here, this guy's now active. Remember, we have memory and we have regulator too. So yes, I know, I know. Okay, so this guy is going to come and activate and help relay and make sure that that everything is going the way that it should with our CD8. Okay, so help active. Okay, so that's it for the TH one cell. We've gone through TH two. We saw how it did its thing. Now we have TH one. It's just the version that reacts to MHC one. That's all. And but now it's going to help activate interactions between CD8 and its target cells. So that it can, what is going to happen then? Oh gosh, wouldn't you know it. We had our CD eight. It's naive. It's now getting activated by help with the target cell. And the signals from the TH one. That's active, right? All that's great. Active. What's happening first? Is it just going to start attacking right away? Absolutely not. It can't. It has to do what? It has to do, yeah, proliferate and differentiate first. So we make copies of the CD8 that sees that target cell that's holding out fidget spinner protein from virus. And then we're going to proliferate, make copies. And then differentiate into the same old crap, okay? Memory, regulator and effector. That's the word for the ones that do the job. Best effector in this case is a cytotoxic T cell. So before it was just CD8. Okay, you can have CD8s that are memory, CD8s that are regulatory and CD8s that are cytotoxic. For example, there's other ones, but this is what we're looking at. So you've got these going and now these cytotoxic, these effector CD8s are the ones that will go to the target cells. Find the ones that have the right MHC one markers on them. Right? And interact them with their T cell receptor on them. If their T cell receptor sees the fidget viral protein held out on MHC one on the target that it was activated to associate with, what it will do is it will release what we call grandsimes and preferants. And they're exactly what they sound like, right? Preferin. It pokes holes in that target cell, which is your cell, right? It just has some viruses in it. Alright, alright. And then we have the grand zone. The grand zone is going to digest the contents of that cell. And the cell's only going to be able to handle so much before it just gives up and goes through apoptosis, which is when the cell kills itself. And that's goal. So those cytotoxic T cells will go around and finding any of them that are holding out that MHC saying, help me, help me. I've got this going on and kill those cells. And that's their role in all of this. And absolutely, you will have all of this going on at once. You don't just make antibody. You don't just make the T cell response. You do both, but depending on the MHC presentation, you can lean one way or the other. So that's how you can favor that response. So when you have a viral infection, you can favor cytotoxic reactions, but still make antibody to protect you from the next time. Right? I think that's it. I think that's it, y'all. I am gonna, I guess, ask you guys if you have any questions. Do you have any questions about this stuff that I went over just now or want me to go over any part of it in more detail? Okay. Um, this, I'm pretty sure that this is going to, I think it saved the whiteboard. I don't know how to, how to post just the whiteboard, but at least the presentation I will be posting later. So if you guys want to get what you need to get from the whiteboard, I'm going to close it here in a little bit. And then I'm, I'm going home, y'all, because I'm with you right now. Nobody showed up here. It's not a big deal or anything. In fact, maybe better that I'm here than not at home because I get distracted easily, but that is what it is. So yeah, you guys want to get what you want to get. I am going to close out of this and try to save everything and upload it.
Um, I have a quick question.
Yeah, of course.
Um, so specifically about when the exam is again?
When it is?
Yes.
Okay, um, so Billy, you are evening class. So yours is going to be on, so we have spring break right now.
Right.
Next week, on Tuesday, we have chapter 17. On Thursday, we have chapter 18. The following Tuesday after that will be the unit three exam.
Okay.
We will have reviews and stuff in between though.
Okay, cool, cool. Thank you.
Yep. Let's see, I just wish I could just save this. I'm not smart enough to figure it out, but whatever. Okay. Alright, well, that's it. I guess I'm going to call it. Yeah, I'm glad to, glad to help you guys, whatever I can do. I know a lot of people are just playing on watching this. So I know that they're, you know, not everybody wants to actually participate, just want to watch it later. So I get it. But yeah, so I appreciate you guys picking me up and giving me something to talk to. Yeah, alright, alright, alright. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Alright, well, let me see if I can save this.